Call the meeting to order, please. This is a Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, September 19, 2019. The time is 7:00. Please call the roll.
President Sells.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Gallagos.
Here.
Trustee Jisa.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Morris.
Here.
Also President Village Clerk Bailey.
Thank you. If you'll please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here with us this evening and to those who will be watching at home. If you are here and you would like to address the board at any time, I ask that you be recognized by the President as you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. You're welcome to speak during public comment or you're welcome to speak when we get to a specific agenda item, whichever you prefer. So first up, is public comment? Would anyone like to address the board? We've gone on to the reports of village officers. First up is my report. The only thing I had this evening is a motion to appoint John Matthews to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire 2021. I would ask for a motion and a second to...
Is there a move?
...by Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Mr. Jisa. Any discussion? I think many of you know Mr. Matthews and know that he's eminently qualified for this position. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the village manager's report.
I have two items this evening. I just wanted to inform the residents who have an opportunity to see it, the new landscaping over by the Metro intersection improvements. The final item really will be the caps on the planters, though I've seen many commuters already sitting on them and utilizing them, which is fantastic, and also utilizing the new bike racks over there. So there's more to come with bike parking, and we are working on it with iDOT for both the north and south side of the tracks. And then the final item that we will also be e-flashing and posting on our village website is Cook County is having an open house meeting. Unfortunately, this is the only location where they'll be having this meeting, and it's located at the Oneeka Village Hall, and their council chamber is at 510 Green Bay Road in Oneeka, Illinois. It's for updated preliminary flood insurance rate maps that are being released for Cook County, so you can stop by anytime between 5:00 and 7:00. And then additionally, just for residents' reference, there is a train line that goes that way. I know it's a challenge to get up north, especially at 5:00 p.m. at night, but if you're interested and want to speak with those that are handling the flood maps, they will be represented in addition to FEMA and county representatives. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills, September 19, 2019; approve the village board of trustees' regular meeting minutes for September 5th; review and file the following, the Economic Development Commission meeting minutes of July 11 and August 22; the Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes, August 13; the community development, finance department, fire department, and police department, August 2019 monthly reports; and lastly, a motion to authorize staff to sign an engagement letter with Chapman and Cutler as bond counsel for general obligation series 2020, the library bonds. Does anyone need anything removed for discussion?
What's your vote?
By Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Ms. Evans. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up, an ordinance amending the village code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois relative to parking time limits, and no parking restrictions related to the reconfiguration of the Blooming Bank and Riverside Road intersection. Director App, please.
As we have completed the Metro pedestrian access improvement project and that reconfigured the intersection of Blooming Bank and Riverside Roads, we do need to amend the municipal code regarding parking. So the proposed amendments will prohibit parking along the north side of Blooming Bank Road in front of the train station, as well as parking along the triangle that's at that intersection. Additionally, we've also been receiving some complaints from the businesses on East Quincy Street regarding the limited availability of parking, as well as the short time restriction, making it difficult for both their clients and customers, as well as employees, to park. So in consultation with the police department, we've met on the issue and are recommending the two-hour parking restriction remain. However, we are in agreement on eliminating that restriction for Saturdays. So the amendment would restrict parking to two hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on weekdays.
Can I ask for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance?
I think my...
By Ms. Evans.
Second.
By Mr. Pollak. Discussion or questions for Director App?
No questions.
Please.
I have a thing on the front of the train station. And the map shows a red line all the way for that whole block, but that's just for public parking because we have the designated spaces of those permitted only.
There's the three spaces there that are for kiss and ride, so those aren't meant to be actual parking spaces. It's just for drop-off and pickup. And then beyond the train station is where we have the metered parking. So it's just in that area, basically, from the train station up to the actual intersection to make sure people don't, especially right around the triangle, don't park in that area. And previously, parking was allowed because there had been some of those parking spaces there that were for, like, the metro ticket person.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Director. Next up, an ordinance to amend Title III Business Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside to create a new Chapter 28 Municipal Cannabis Retailers Occupation Tax with regard to the imposition of a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. Director Johns.
Good evening. At the September 5th board meeting, the village board adopted a tax amendment regulating recreational cannabis retailers in Riverside. The village now has the opportunity to impose a municipal cannabis retailer's occupation tax. The board may adopt this tax in 0.25% increments with a maximum of 3%. Before you tonight is a resolution adopting the maximum 3% tax.
So I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the ordinance.
Is there a move?
By Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Ms. Evans. Questions? Comments? Mr. Morris?
I just wanted to talk about the timing of implementation real quick because it's...
Can I have just a second?
Sure.
Did you have a question first, Mr. Han?
I'll go after Attorney first.
Okay. It's a little bit in flux. So the state of the law now is, it says municipalities adopt the ordinance, turn it in by June 1st of the year for implementation in September. So under that scenario, nobody's going to be able to collect the tax until September 1st next year. And that, the June 1st date is largely a functioning of the state legislation and that date maybe not being looked at closely in this large bill as they ran up against the end of the session. So there's a move afoot to clarify the bill in a number of issues during the fall veto session on the General Assembly, and this is one of the issues that's anticipated to be on the table, to possibly move up that date so that municipalities don't miss out on those nine months of revenue to the extent that they do have a dispensary. So what we're advising people is to adopt these ordinances, get it to the Department of Revenue in anticipation of that date possibly being moved up rather than waiting until after January 1st.
Got it. Mr. Han?
I know this is later on the agenda with the discussion on the business district, and I saw that there was a 1% tax imposed, and just wanted to get some clarity. If we would have a cannabis real estate, cannabis dispensary in one of these business districts, would that be a collective 4% tax with 1% being withheld for the business district?
Plus our retail sales tax and our non-hemeral sales tax.
Of course.
So the total tax levy would be 6%. As Manager Francis has said, it would be the 3% tax that we're talking about right now, the 1% sales tax, 1% business tax if it's in a district, and then the non-hemeral sales tax. The non-hemeral sales tax is allocated to street repairs only, and if it was in a business district, that percentage point would only be able to be used to make improvements within the business district. Did I get that right?
Yes.
So 1% for street improvements, 1% for business district improvements is what we're breaking down.
Right.
Okay. That was helpful.
So anything within the business district boundary, so if there's infrastructure that needs to be taken care of, that would be inclusive of utilizing those funds for that?
And I'm not quite sure where I got this date. Maybe it was from the materials. It's been a long day. October 1st is the deadline for submitting this to the state, so they...
So again, there's not really a deadline, but because the June 1st to September is like a three-month wrap-up, we're kind of anticipating the first thing. So October 1st gets you those three months before January 1st. So that's why it makes sense to try to get in by October 1st, but there's no actual deadline.
Okay.
And just for further clarification, from Department of Revenue standards, you always have to file a quarter ahead of time before implementation. So that's why October 1st.
Other comments? Questions? Please call the roll. Oh, yes, ma'am, please. Yes, please.
I'm Jill Basick. I live on 186 Millbridge. Two things. If other villages in the area put in dispensaries and decide to go up 1 and 1/2 or 2 or 25%, is that going to cut into our profits? Is that a concern? And the other question is, I read one of, and I don't remember her name, one of the representatives who helped draft this said she strongly suggested that townships don't immediately go to the 3% because of the question I asked before. So I was just wondering if that's been taken into consideration, discussed, because you'd hate to go through all of this and dirty the name of our town and not get the revenue we thought, because there's a couple other ones that wanted to have a 2%. Just asking.
Mr. Morris, did you have any insight on either of those questions?
Sure. So I've seen that same warning from the state reps. The state and the General Assembly have imposed taxes ranging from 10% to 25% going to the state. They also, after the Cannabis Act was passed, passed another bill that allowed counties to impose an additional 3%. So on top of even sales in municipalities. So it seemed a little disingenuous when they're saying to municipalities, "Try to hold back," you know?
And I understand that it's just we're a small town, you know, surrounded by...
No, understood.
And I'm, you know, I mean, if you're going to do this and jump into the top thinking we're going to get more money, might...
Right. It's early yet, so I can't say what other communities are doing, but I would anticipate most places are going to impose it at the 3%.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, our considerations. We're going to first have a discussion about the renewal of the Flood Brothers contract renewal, and Mr. Flood is here. If you have any questions for him. Manager Francis, you're going to lead us through this?
I am. So actually, our contract is not up for renewal until May of 2020. However, due to some renegotiations of the regional disposal project, which the village is a member of collectively through our municipal conference, and it's a separate agency, they actually realized some savings with renegotiating their contract for disposal services. And so therefore, Flood Brothers has recognized some savings. And so when I knew that was going to occur, I reached out to Flood Brothers and said, "Well, we should really revisit our contract." And Flood Brothers was very open to it. And so I will walk you through. There's a table that's provided, and most recently, actually, Michael Flood provided an updated letter with regard to the items that we would be looking at as part of our renewal. So one key piece is holding the current rates plan for the existing year, and then looking at 1 and 1/2 to 3% increase based on Consumer Price Index, which, if you recall, we are actually limited by tax caps as well for levying, so this is actually a good guiding principle for our contracts as well. We would still remain having the senior discount at 15%, so there's no change. There's also the commercial rates that are incorporated as part of the proposal. Additionally, the big item that I think Michael and I are both very proud of is, a lot of the feedback that the village has received is currently we offer composting. In the new contract, they're offering a reduced rate for composting, which is excellent. We offer the CFL recycling, battery recycling, but the key piece that continues to be missing, and granted, our contract in comparison to other communities offers a lot, and that was intentional when we first negotiated this contract, was because I wanted to make sure that based on the feedback that we were receiving from residents, both myself, the village clerk, and other village staff, we wanted to make sure that we are hitting on those points. But the key item that we kept getting feedback on was the hazardous waste disposal. And so as part of this contract, it incorporates one annual hazardous disposal. So the first year will be, you know, just figuring out the logistics of it, but we're very proud of having this and offering this to our residents. We'll try to coordinate it around springtime to ensure that residents have the opportunity to kind of clear out whatever hazardous items that they have, and then work closely with Flood Brothers to throw that out. But we're very proud of this collaboration that we've had with Flood Brothers over the past couple of years. I've received very positive feedback. You have to remember that our previous contract, we had over 30 years with the same vendor. So there was a little bit of transition initially, but overall, residents have been satisfied with their service, and I'm pleased with the renewal that they've provided for the village. Like President Sells said, Michael Flood is here if the board has any questions as it relates to the renewal or just the contract in general. And if there is consensus for staff to move forward on making the amendment to our existing contract and extending it for the seven-year term, we will work with Flood Brothers and the village attorney to create that amendment or board action at an upcoming meeting.
Comments? Questions?
I have a question.
Please.
With the backdoor senior discount, so that's the 15%?
So Flood Brothers offers backdoor service automatically to seniors, correct, Michael? Yes.
Right.
But you also get the 15% discount.
The 15% is the...
Michael, could you go?
Yeah. Thanks.
I'm Michael Flood with Flood Brothers.
He'll get you.
Yeah, okay. The question was regarding the senior discount. So we offer a 15% senior discount to seniors that qualify, and then there was something about the back door.
Well, yeah, how does that? There's no cost anywhere. I'm just curious because I take my own garbage out every week. So today, do you guys kick it up in the back and take it back once you do it?
So, yes.
And what's the cost for that? And how do you qualify?
Hypothetical.
I'm going to have to dig into some...
For seniors out there, they're trying to get money chips.
I think the focus was kind of like the main topic items. We didn't add that into this. I don't have it in front of me.
I understand. For this president.
So...
Because I wasn't aware of that, and I think that's fantastic.
Right.
So, is that? It's great, especially when we went to town. Or how do you qualify?
So the word to qualify would be contact in our office via the website or phone in, and we have an application you fill out and a piece, you know, of criteria to meet. Obviously, be the head of the household and also, you know, be a resident in, you know, the home and be over the age of 65, I believe it is, and just proof of ID, state ID, driver's license, whatever it may be, and then we can implement it right away.
So we can get a more detailed answer to that question. So if there's consensus for the staff to move forward on this, we can address that when we discuss the schedule.
If I can just ask a couple of questions.
Please.
This chart is very helpful. I just want to make sure I understand it. In looking at this, it looks like the prices go up roughly 30 to 40 cents every year, but the bullet points that summarize talk about the Consumer Price Index between 1.5 and 3%. And I'm just...
These are commercial.
Oh, commercial, okay. That's why I didn't look at the chart. So I'm just concerned on locking in, you know, obviously, in CPI, it's not something that Flood Brothers controls, but being in a situation that we're locked into a 2% to 3% increase every year over a seven-year period, that is a big bite, and I'm not quite sure how to control that, but, you know, in a case of, you know, the CPI increasing, you know, I don't want to be in a position to have the residents locked into that price increase year after year after year if there's a way we can step it up or every two years or what may work to have it more of a stepping stone as opposed to each year getting a potential increase.
Manager Francis, do you have any thoughts about that?
Well, our current contract also had incremental increases within it as well. If you recall, when we negotiated our Flood Brothers contract, when we were, I think it was Republic at that time, I think they had gone through the name change from Allied, and Flood Brothers was actually lower than Allied at that point, or Republic at that time.
Okay. And then two more quick questions. The comments I get back when we had our day at the farmer's market, sitting at the trustee table, had a couple of questions about recycling and the perception that there are recycling bins, but questioning how much they actually gets recycled, gets reclaimed, and, you know, the stories that I hear is, well, if it's in a plastic bag, it doesn't get reclaimed. If it's not sorted right, it doesn't get reclaimed. And I just want to hear, is there a way within the context of that contract to be able to increase the efficiency of recycling without obviously imposing an added cost?
Any questions?
Yes. I mean, you know, over the years, recycling has, you know, had some struggles with China putting a hold on what comes in from, you know, the states, and, you know, us as haulers have seen it, and the costs have gone up with that. I think one way with, you know, what we can continue to do is, you know, further educate, maybe through, you know, the invoicing mailers, putting in literature explaining more ways to improve your recycling. Plastic bags are not, you know, something that is a positive way of recycling. You know, the brown, you know, paper bag, craft bags are always recommended, or just putting everything in loose into your recycling bin would help to avoid having any plastic bags in the stream.
How's America we're getting a senior discount?
Excuse me, just one second. You said you had another...
I know when we, and this is going back many years, so I don't know if it was five or 10, or if I just trumped it. At some point, we did get new garbage cans, and I'm wondering if that's something on, you know, since we're going seven years out, if at some point there can be a switch out, because I know some residents are, you know, there's issues with the draining in some of the cans that creates a bug issue. And, you know, I think asking people to hold on to the same cans that they had now, you know, going on five-plus years, it'd be 13 years, you know, that seems like we're something that might be considered as part of the mix.
So currently, residents that had carts, so that was an old contract that was probably 10, 15 years ago? Yeah. So, and as part of that contract renewal, they negotiated that carts would be bought for residents, and as part of our new contract with Flood, they offer the carts. You can call them and ask them to switch it out, but you do pay a rental fee. So...
The village owns the recycling carts, some of them?
Some.
We have replaced them. If there's damage, wear, and tear that happens to your cart, that are the Flood Brother carts or even the Riverside carts, we've been switching those out as requested.
Mr. Poll?
I have the same concern that Trustee Hannan had in his first question about a seven-year contract and locking in for that length of time. It seems like a long time to lock into this type of a contract, and I guess just as my direction to staff or my suggestion to staff would be, if we're going to consider seven years, I want to see some give and take. In other words, I want to see a really good deal on prices if we're going to go seven years. Otherwise, I would rather stick to more of a maybe a three- or five-year contract.
Ms. Evans?
Yeah, I would like to know, is the composting program very popular? Do you know about how many people are using that?
So we roughly have about, I'd say about 10% to 12% of the residents currently subscribing to it. I know Kathy and Director Bailey have kind of helped with pushing more of that, and part of what we're going to, you know, hope to do is do some things through the Riverside Library and Riverside TV and be a little more active in promoting that, and so residents hopefully can, you know, see a benefit and see some growth here.
How does it work?
How does the composting program work?
Yeah.
So currently, we are supplying the residents a yard waste cart. Currently, you have a garbage and a recycling cart, and you can use your own containers and bags for yard waste. So we supply a 95-gallon, 65-gallon, whatever's preferred, cart, two-wheeled cart, and then you can mix your yard waste and your food scraps into it. They also then receive an internal little five-gallon bin for inside the house, you know, through kitchen table scraps and things of that nature to store it, and then they can bring it out to the cart outside. We also then initially at the beginning of, you know, the implementation, provide food waste bags. We've also worked with Riverside Foods on selling those bags in, you know, higher volumes.
And where do you take it?
What's it?
Where do you take it?
So we have a yard waste facility in Maywood that then handles it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Other comments? I guess the only thing I would add is that I concur with what Mr. Pollak said, that if we're going to, if we're going to, you know, sign something for seven years, then it needs to be worked on a while. Please, next up, thank you, Mr. Pollak.
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, you had a question, Mr. Eric.
Yeah.
Could you, can you go up to the...
No, just a question. How do we know we're getting a senior discount?
Thank you. My card.
Okay, bye, brother. I'm on those. Thank you.
Civic response has been said its best. All right. Next up is a discussion regarding the additional business districts on Harlem Avenue and Agnew. Director App.
Business districts are an economic development tool that can be used by municipalities to revitalize and stabilize commercial areas. Business district funds can be utilized for improvements within that district, as we kind of discussed earlier this evening, including infrastructure improvements, streetscape improvements, stormwater detention, facade improvement grants, construction costs, property assembly, site preparation costs, the list goes on. Back in February of 2017, we did adopt our first business district on Harlem Avenue, which is up at Long Common. We've identified two areas as options for new business districts on Harlem Avenue, and we presented them to you back in July. You believe that creating additional business districts, a major roadway, and imposing a 1% tax could potentially benefit the village, creating a revenue source that could be used should a redevelopment opportunity present itself. You also discussed possibly amending our existing business district to encompass all of Harlem Avenue rather than creating two business districts, and you directed staff to investigate that potential or the creation of the two new business districts on Harlem Avenue. So staff has reached out to several consultants to obtain pricing, performing an eligibility analysis of the areas, and preparing for board a review of business district plan or amending our existing business district and creating an amended plan. We received three proposals from three consultants, Kane McKenna and Associates, which did our original business district, Stern Brothers, and S.B. Friedman Development Advisors. These proposals don't include the costs for publications for the public notices or the for the public notices or the mailings, or land surveyor costs related to getting a legal description for the boundaries of those business districts. So those costs would be in addition to their services to create those, just so you know. But Kane McKenna's proposal came in at $4,000 to $11,000. Stern Brothers came in at $28,000 to $38,000, and S.B. Friedman's came in at just under $26,000 to $30,000. So we did not budget for this expense for fiscal year 2019, so we are requesting direction from the village board whether to enter into an agreement with Kane McKenna, who has the lowest proposal to begin the analysis.
Questions? Comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Evans?
Are we going to, are we making a decision between extending the first district or creating two districts?
Actually, that was a question I had. So would, if we do use Kane McKenna, are they going to provide us information on both of those options?
Yes, they will do an initial analysis that will let us know the feasibility or the practicality of extending the existing business district, and then based on that, then we will move forward either with that extension or with moving forward with creating the two new ones if it doesn't seem like it's feasible to do the extension.
So if they came back and they said, we've done an analysis, and it doesn't seem feasible to extend, would it then cost us more to have them do?
Well, that's the range. I kind of asked them to break that out, so that's that range. So they anticipate that if we only need to, if we can easily extend the existing business district, the overall cost is going to be closer to the $4,000 range. If we do need to create two new business districts, they anticipate the cost could get closer to $12,000.
I suspect that the view of the board is, we would prefer to just have one contiguous business district if possible. So let's hope that they can give us that. So is it okay with everyone to go with Kane McKenna?
Yes.
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 Very good. Thank you very much.
We have no new business. We do, however, have a need for a short executive session to discuss lease price of village of property and the purchase of real property for the use of a public body. So I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session. I have to read your name.
So moved.
Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
Trustee Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jiza.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
We need to adjourn. Thank you. Good night.